Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, January 7, 2013. We'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in Seigneur Canada. Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We would move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the minutes of the city council meeting held December 10, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And Q. And that motion carries and the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of 9.8 Community Development Services.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. One addition to the agenda, 9.8. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That would bring us to the delegation portion of the agenda. It looks like nobody's ready to hit our first council meeting of 2013. Doesn't look like we have any delegations coming forward, even though this is a slot that's available to any community member that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We'll go to through public hearings of which we had none, unfinished business of which we had none, no reports, and we go directly into committee business. And 9.1, the Pursuit of Excellence Committee from December 4, 2012. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held December 4, 2012.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any discussion on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor McLean, anything you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
You bet, Mayor. Thank you. Just a few individuals who were awarded some funding for coach development funding, for cross-country skiing. Katrina Nag, $275 for Level 1 CSI training. David Stepniski, $162.28 for Level 1 CSI training. Ben Harder, $155.73 to complete Level 1 snowboard training. And as well, Dylan Kaluski, $236.60 for the same snowboarding event class. And as well, Dwayne, or Dana Derrickson, $242.55 to complete CSI Level 1 training. And Megan Platzer, $166.52 to complete CSI Level 1 training. And at that end year-end, Mayor, there was maybe $8,000 to $90,000 left remaining of the $40,000 to distribute throughout the whole year. So we're hoping that it'll be all eaten up for 2013 and that more people will be coming to ask for training funding and everything. As well, I'd like to make one note for Catherine Stone. She used to live here. She's training. She's competing. She's on the World Cup biathlon, cross-country skiing. And she will be competing in Europe this winter as well. And she started with Pursuit of Excellence.
Very cool. Thanks, Counselor McLean. Good to see that money helping our athletes get to that next level. We go to 9.2, the Public Works Committee. Counselor Radburn, I think you're going to step in for us on that one, right?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held December 11, 2012.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you. I'd move council award tender T-82552-12 for the 100th Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation to Horseshoe Hill Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $2,314,491 plus $345,000 contingency, totaling $2,659,491 excluding GST, as the lowest tender, and that funding be allocated from the 100th Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Program and increase the funding for the 100th Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Program by $450,000 with funds from the Municipal Sustainability Initiative Grant, MSI, to cover the additional contingency and engineering costs. So just a quick background. This evaluation of this project done in 2004 showed that the bridge was in fair to poor condition and would have five to 10 years' life, so to speak. We're nearing that point now. And so we, as council is all aware, we tried to do this about a year ago. Unfortunately, the contractor that was chosen couldn't fulfill that commitment, so we had to re-attend her. There were eight tenders this time. And so I think it's time to move forward and get this worked on. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. As Counselor Radburn said, we did vote for this to proceed, and the company doing the job kind of folded. And now we're reissued it. And I'm glad it's going forward, as a lot of people in the Grand Prairie Running Club and that that go underneath the bridge are kind of worried, is a piece of concrete going to fall on them or not? Just a question for, I don't know who this goes directly to, for when, is it going to start if this passes tonight, like within a month, and then be finished in the summer? Is this a two-stage start in the winter? Some of this I heard. And be finished in the summer? And will there be still one lane access over the bridge?
I wonder. Ms. Donnelly, can you speak to that?
My understanding-
Sorry, Christine. You'll have to hit your, there's a button on the-
There we go. My understanding is that some work will get started fairly quickly here, and that a lot of the work will continue through the summer. As we mentioned, the intention is to keep one lane open at all times. As the project goes, we'll have to see how things work out, but that is currently the plan.
Okay, one more question, please, Ms. Donnelly. For the under, going underneath the bridge for travelers, will there be like something built so that while they're constructing, you can still travel underneath for jogging and everything in the park? Has that been thought of?
Ms. Donnelly, the pedestrian path?
Yes.
That's a good question. And I do not know the specific answer. I can get it for you. I do know that if it can't be made safe, it will be closed off. And so ever any steps needed to make sure it's safe will be done if it remains open. I can get back to you on that with an email.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further questions, discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Nothing else, Mayor Given. Thank you. It was a short agenda.
Then 9.3, Counselor Crokin and Community Development Committee from December 11.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held December 11, 2012.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin.
Further, I also will, council approve amendments to Policy 201, Recreation Fees and Charges, effective January 1, 2013, through to December 31, 2014.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also move council award tender T-625012, Pool Chemicals for the East League Center and Bear Creek Outdoor Pools, in the amount of $311,635.11 excluding GST, to Automated Aquatics Canada Limited, with an option to extend to 2015 at an increase of 5% per year.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Questions, comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, there was one thing. We had a delegation come to the Community Development Committee meeting. And Ms. Jane Cadda Sharp, the general manager of the Crystal Center, presented to committee a report on paid parking at the Crystal Center. And so it was, there was a bit of a delegation there, and they were just interviewing or discussing the benefits of paid or not paid. So the report, the full report hasn't been brought to council yet, so ordered the Community Development Committee meeting. So we're expecting that in the near future. That was everything.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. We'll move on to the Protective Services Committee from December 18. Counselor Wong. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Excuse me. I flipped a page ahead there. Counselor O'Toole and the Combatant Sports Commission. Thanks, everybody. Good catch. Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to recommend council receive the minutes of the Combatant Sports Commission meeting held December 17, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Errors or omissions? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, now that you have the floor, is there anything you'd like to say about that meeting?
Yes, it was kind of the year-end meeting. And we have a couple of events booked here for the first part of the year. And one of the topics of discussion was the coordination of event for the volunteer and the hosting of clinics. Also, the board members are given certain tasks now, or had looked at looking at giving certain tasks. So we reviewed key positions for roles and upcoming events scheduled in February and March. So each member of the board will have a specific role to undertake during those two events. Also, we discussed some ticket sales for the excessive force. Mr. Darren Cliff gave a presentation at that meeting as well. So everything is good.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Okay, now that brings us to 9.5 in the Protective Services Committee. Counselor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held December 18, 2012.
Thanks, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong.
I move the council award tender T-81323-12 to GO Welding in the amount of $220,500 excluding GST, as the lowest evaluated tender to complete construction of the Westgate Fire Station Training Facility, and that council approve auxiliary costs for engineering inspection and contingency in the amount of $14,500 to complete the training facility with funding from the Future Expenditures Reserve. In speaking to this, Mayor Given, this is to complete the construction of the fire hall, which was originally budgeted in 2010. It will create an outdoor training facility for the firefighters. The firefighters will be able to do some confined space training there. And there is opportunity to generate some revenue from the training facility, because other fire stations from the region will want to use this as training for their firefighters. Originally, when this item came up in the 2010 budget, or in the original tender, it was a $600,000 add-on. Council at the time decided not to go ahead with the training facility. The project was then delayed until now, which is why it wasn't a part of the original, the original construction. So the $235,000 cost here, instead of going towards the debenture, is going to be funded from the Future Expenditures Reserve, because the funding was already taken care of at a previous time.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question, Counselor Wong. This third fire hall we have is beautiful. It's, I mean, for the city, it's unbelievable, and it's a real fire hall. You got a fire pole in there and everything. I'm just really excited about this. But this training facility right beside it, I'm not so sold on right beside it, I know, but there's a bunch of C-cans. Is it going to look nice when it's all done? Or, you know, we've got a brand-new facility worth $6.5 million, and we're going to put up some C-cans right beside it. Just wondering, some thought in that and how high they're going. I'm all for the training facility, but I'm not sure if it's the greatest location.
Right. I might want to defer that to one of our administration. I know that it is going to look like a training facility, though, because that is the purpose of that part of the fire hall. Each fire hall is going to specialize in a specific function, and that one is going to specialize in rescue-type situations. So if anyone from the administration can help me out.
Yeah. They're not here? Oh, okay. All right. Maybe next time.
Okay. Anything further on that one? Discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that the city of Grand Prairie enter into the Emergency Management Aid Agreement with the county of Grand Prairie, towns of Beaver Lodge, Sexsmith, Wembley, and the Village of Hythe, and further once entered into that agreement, withdraw from the Peacetime Fire and Disaster Mutual Aid Agreement of 1983. This is essentially an update of that agreement. It spells out exactly what happens in the event that one of the municipalities has to declare a state of local emergency. In that case, the partnering municipalities will come in to help, and it spells out how those partners will get reimbursed for their services as well.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, just to echo support for this, I am council rep on the Joint Regional Emergency Management Committee, and this has done a lot of work on this. And it does, as Dan has suggested, it also covers the logistics of how we're going to work together. And so we're looking forward to moving forward with this. I believe the other Miss Fellies have supported this agreement to date. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else, Counselor Wong, in that set of minutes?
I just wanted to point out that the committee also directed administration to look at our Bylaw C-1166, Traffic Bylaw, Schedule 1, which is the Schedule of Fines. And we recommended that parking fines for infractions for people parking in disabled parking spots be increased from $150 to $250 to be more in line with cities of Airdrie and Edmonton, but also to act as a bit of a deterrent, because that seems to happen a lot up in our area. And, you know, we were looking for some way to discourage that kind of activity.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. 9.6, the 100th Anniversary Committee. I think Counsel O'Toole, you're going to step in for us on that one.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On behalf of Counselor Helen Raitz, as chair, I will, I will go through this. I would like to recommend council approve the minutes of, or receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee held on December 18, 2012.
Great. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Counselor Gustafson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, there's a minor mistake on the last motion by Counselor Gustafson.
Sure. Just want to highlight what that was.
It wasn't me.
It wasn't you?
Somebody else made that motion.
Oh, okay. Do we have a recollection of the committee? Okay. So we'll get that corrected from the committee minutes. Do we have to review them? Anything else? Oh, Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just also, I'm looking at the top of page two.
Sorry, Counselor Radburn. Can you turn on your microphone there?
Got it. Thank you. Just get somebody, get somebody to look at the top of page two. Just the sentence does not, doesn't work.
Okay.
Let's leave it that way.
Okay. So we have a correction to make there. And anything further, Counselor McLean? Did I see you in the queue?
I'm just, I guess I sent it to David about the history book. It just where it's going. And I know there's been money allocated. If he could just-
Sure. Ms. Ollinger, would you like to give us a little bit of an update on the 100th Anniversary Book?
We're in final negotiations this week, Mr. Mayor, with the, we've established a local writer. The successful term Red, the agency, has asked me to work with them to solidify the local writer. There were about 200 people identified overall that we will be profiling as community builders. Of those, about 45 are living. So, and those would be in categories everywhere from commerce, sports and recreation, arts and culture, politics, service clubs, religious groups, transportation, and a variety of others. We're also working with a video company, because part of the idea was is that we would have, be able to augment the history book with video on the website and do Vimeo's as well. And it was also noted in the minutes that the proponents of the community play were, they were at the meeting, and they've asked for us to cooperate and get some of, some information from some of the interviews to help their process as well, which we will certainly be doing. So very shortly, the interviews will begin with the people we're profiling in the, in the book. And the book is to launch on the August long weekend in 2014.
Thanks very much, Ms. Ollinger. Okay, thank you very much. Excuse me. Okay. And so if there's nothing further on the minutes, then we'll call for the vote on that set of minutes, as amended, obviously. Thank you. And that motion carries. And anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given, I will. We had a delegation from the local acting group, Grand Prairie Century Play. They have a proposal that they would like to bring forward, and just looking for some funding. We reviewed some of their ideas, and we have not given them a commitment as of yet. We had a history book update, and I was going to get Mr. Ollinger to discuss that. It's already been done, so we're good there. We have some homecoming subcommittees that we talked about, Bear Creek North Design Proposals, one of the projects that 100th Anniversary, that we were looking at through the city to come up with. And Ms. Laurie Berry had showed an overhead view of what the proposals could look like. Other items of the 100th, 100 Days of Events, and we're putting that together now, a little early before, but now things are a year away. So things are coming together for that. Other than that, we have talked about some of the types of souvenirs, some sponsorship, and the downtown association's involvement. And that would be all.
Great. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. So we'll move on to 9.7, General Government Services. And I think Counsel O'Toole, you're going to handle that one, too.
All right. We'll look at, the council receive the minutes, I would recommend the council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee held December 18, 2012.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions in that one? Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just think that Kevin, Counselor O'Toole, should be noted as acting chair on the committee minutes.
Okay. Good catch. Thank you. Any further discussion or catches? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
Just to speak on a couple of the reports that we had that day, Policy 344, the Pinnacle Ridge Special Tax Reserve, Ms. Dawn Sovee, the financial analysis reported to committee, and the Pinnacle Ridge Special Tax Reserve.
So I think we have a motion coming out of that item?
Yeah. Okay. So. Okay. So with that, I will go, I would like to recommend council approve Policy 344, the Pinnacle Ridge Special Sub, Special Tax Reserve as presented, and council approve the transfer of $8,221.26 from the Financial Stabilization Reserve to the Pinnacle Ridge Special Tax Reserve.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything else to highlight in that set of minutes, Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, we had correspondence from the Downtown Association regarding amendments to the Bylaw C-801. And we had some correspondence from the Consulting Engineers of Alberta regarding the purchasing processes of the city of Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Then bring us to our additional item of 9.8. And Counselor Crokin, do you want to handle that from the special CDC meeting? Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess I would handle that. I move the council award RFP-55439-12, the Crystal Center Economic Assessment, to PricewaterhouseCoopers, LLP, as the highest evaluated proponent successfully meeting the request for proposal specifications in the amount of $84,800 exclusive of GST.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any questions or comments, notes on this? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. And I think that was the only item of business from that special CDC, Counselor Crokin?
Yes, Mayor Given, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. I think that finishes all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence tonight. We had no delegation, so no delegation business. There were no notices of motion. That takes us to council member reports. And Counselor O'Toole, you seem to be on a little bit of a roll tonight, so we'll, Philip J. Curry, Dinosaur Museum, I think you had an update. And we'll start with council member roundtable after your conclusion.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. The Philip J. Curry Museum has had some pretty good news over the last four weeks. And the construction will be starting here fairly soon. We have an RFP that'll be sent out fairly soon. And I've been nominated and voted in as a committee member, as a voting member of the construction committee. So that's the, that's the highlight of today.
Okay. Well, and we'll start council member roundtable with yourself, and we'll go to Counselor Radburn and-
Okay. I'll just get my calendar up here. And I'll kind of keep it fairly short here. It's been a pretty hectic two weeks. But I can tell you, on December 19, Sunwing Aviation Holidays had their inaugural flight. It left Grand Prairie at 5:00 AM in the morning. And to Port of Viarta, I was there to, I didn't go. I was very tempted. It was about 36 below that day. But that was, we had an inaugural flight that day. We had 90, 56 people get on the plane from Grand Prairie. What else we got? Um, what else we got? I went to the library, uh, Christmas party and, uh, that they had for their staff, and also long service awards. Uh, once again, there's people that have worked at the library for over, over ten years. Uh, we handed out a number of awards for five and ten years, and, uh, very enjoyable, uh, morning breakfast with them. And, uh, I went to the open house for both, uh, GP Wapiti, um, Everett, or GP Wapiti, Wayne Drysdale on the nineteenth as well, and on the twenty-second, I attended, uh, Everett McDonald's Open House. Uh, what else? On this, the fourth of this month, Friday, I gave greetings on behalf of the mayor at the Gordon Badger Dog Sled Mushers Meeting and, uh, Weekend Event, and, uh, it was well-attended. We've had people show up from as far away as Newfoundland. Uh, there was mushers from Manitoba, mushers from all over B.C., and as well as all over the province of Alberta, and as far away as White Horse, Alberta. And I talked to them after the events, and they weren't leaving right away. They were gonna spend some quality time in Grand Prairie. So, hats off, and, uh, what else we got here? And that should be just about it, sir.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Redmond?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, December eleventh, Parkinson Society Holiday Open House, and then, uh, in the evening, I went to the Comp Wellness Center opening. December thirteenth, Provincial Human Resources Funding Announcement, MLA McDonald was there. That funding was, uh, supports the homeless and, uh, funding to end homelessness. December fifteenth was the RBC, uh, donation to minor hockey of twenty-five thousand dollars. Congratulations to the Pee-wee knights, who I think helped put the, uh, proposal together, and I think they're using it for some dividers, so that the young youngsters, like novice age, like my grandson, will be able to, uh, divvy up the ice surface, so they can, uh, use it more effectively. Uh, December seventeenth, Community Social Development Open House and Inclusive Communities Video Media Launch. Uh, December eighteenth, Grand Spirit Foundation, Richard Harp, Debbie Armington, and myself met with Mike Leafwood, ADM Municipal Affairs, Seniors Housing. December nineteenth, Grand Spirit Foundation Christmas Lunch, Managers and Board, MLA Drysdale's Christmas Open House. December twentieth, Airport Commission, Grand Spirit Foundation Management Committee Meeting with Associate Minister George Vanderberg, and in the evening, the Scores Standing Committee Christmas Dinner. December twenty-first, uh, attended the twenty-fifth anniversary celebration for our city manager, Greg and his wife, Terry. Congratulations to you two. Uh, December twenty-second, MLA McDonald's Holiday Open House, and December twenty-seventh, I had an opportunity to tour the new county sportsplex. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redmond. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I had to throw a couple in I missed that I thought was important. Uh, December sixth, I went to an open house for the Storm Drainage Master Plan. A lot of people almost fall asleep when they hear that, but actually, um, it's very interesting, and I found out there's actually a, a sort of a drainage area, water that I thought went one way actually goes the other way, and it was right behind my home, so it was quite, uh, knowledgeable for me to actually attend that event and to learn more. Uh, December seventh, I also attended the Lifelong Learning Winter Celebration, uh, at the Lions Center. December thirteen, that was a, the announcement for the Ministry of Human Services, the Salvation Army, I think it was just over four hundred thousand. I could be corrected, but they added a little bit more money in there. Uh, December thirteen, also went to Chamber Mixer with my wife, Tina, at Carpet Superstore, very well-attended, and there was a few other councils there as well. December fourteenth, I was at Bieber Lodge for the Community Futures Strategic Planning Session. Uh, December fifteen, I was at, uh, the first Canadian dinner program for the Filipino community. Uh, there's a few different, uh, organizations. This was the Car Can Mad, Car Land Organizations, the first one. They had the president up from Calgary. Uh, Rose, the president, here, and it was a tremendous honor to be there on behalf of the mayor and council, and I, I, I said so there. There was about, just over three hundred individuals at this. They're our biggest minority in the city of Grand Prairie now, and I am very fortunate because for the last four years, we've had a lady named Carolina that's helped us at our home, and she'll probably be moving on next summer with her family moving here, and they're very hard-working, dedicated, and they really wanna become good Canadians. So, uh, I will have to say, on the one dance that they did, the, the Gangman Style, Manuel Rees, unbelievable. He, he copied it and probably exceeded, uh, what was done on, uh, Internet. So, anyways, I was very glad, and I would love to attend it next year in the spring or wherever they have, because, uh, they make our community stronger for moving here, and I told them that, and I'm glad they came here. Um, December eighteenth as well, my wife, Tina, and I helped out at EMS Candy Cane Lane Check Stop, and actually, it's kind of, I heard that there was a, a lot of officers that wanted to help out, and they said, "No, we only need so many." So, I actually had a very good turnout, and I think there was around three hundred vehicles, just letting them know, "Christmas time, drive safe, and be careful, wear your seatbelts, watch for the kids." Um, December nineteenth, I also attended the GP Wapiti Consistency Open House, the Curling Rink, very well-done, and as we all know, the calendars from, uh, Wayne Drysdale, they're pretty good, updated for lots of events in our community. Uh, December twenty-seventh, I also, uh, with Council Redmond and, and a few others, uh, had a tour, um, uh, the new county sportsplex right on our borders, and, uh, I actually, we tried out the grass field there, and it's really comfortable, and I think they're gonna have, uh, a lot of fun there, people that are on the field and using the ice rinks. That's all.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. December thirteenth, I was at the Chamber Mixer at Carpet Superstore. December fourteenth, the City Hall Christmas Luncheon. Later, I worked a Christmas Kettle Chef, shift for the Salvation Army. December fifteenth, I attended the Boys Choir Christmas Concert, which is another fantastic event that they put on every year. I highly recommend people go out and see that. Uh, December twentieth, Senator Two Thousand had a Christmas social. Uh, also, I attended the Scores Standing Committee Christmas Dinner. December twenty-first, I was at a subdivision Appeal Board Meeting. We did not have a quorum at that meeting, so we set a new, a new date for the next meeting. Uh, later that evening, I was also at Greg and Terry Scherbach's twenty-fifth wedding anniversary celebration. Congratulations, you two. Uh, December twenty-second, Holiday Open House with MLA Everett McDonald, and finally, this morning, I was at the County Office for a meeting with the Wapiti Quarter Planning Society and enforcement personnel around the area, uh, just getting some feedback regarding the multi-use plan we're developing. And that's everything.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, this past weekend, I was able to go to the sportsplex in, in the county, way out in the county there. Very nice facility, and I wish them all the best in their, in their new ventures out there. Uh, over the, over the Christmas season here, I was able to watch a lot of minor hockey, and, and there's been some vigorous conversations on the amount and, and talk about, uh, possibly having a sixteen, eighteen-age group, uh, skill development, youth non-contact league. There seems to be a gap there between, uh, you know, minor hockey, sixteen, eighteen-years-olds before they get into, into the industrial league, so, um, you know, if we can maybe refer that to, to Gary's, either CDC or the Recreation Committee for further discussion at a upcoming meet, meeting, possibly, uh, that, that age group there, if we could, we could pay it in score, in, in sports, we could, we could keep them out of court, and, and I would, uh, really entertain enjoying that. Uh, as we move into this new year, I'd like to briefly reflect on a few milestones and changes over the last year that we've had here. Uh, downtown, the sidewalk cafes were, were a big hit. Um, Mayor Given, uh, really commend you and, on your, on your trip to the ledge and voicing our concerns to the, uh, to the ministers and the, and the premier there. I think that's, uh, work well-done. Uh, the East Link Center, uh, the Radburn Family for their, the For Me For Life Campaign, and the staff, of course, at East Link Center for all the hard work that they do there. Uh, the opening of the new fire hall, uh, big thanks to our firefighting crews who have been rather busy keeping us safe lately. Uh, the new crime prevention office opened last year as well. These are, these are some of the backbones of our community. Um, big thank you to, uh, Minister Wayne Drysdale and our new and recent MLA Everett McDonald for, for almost finishing Highway forty-three, although it's supposed to be done this year, hopefully, and another, uh, I could go on forever, but briefly, the, uh, the Random Act of Kindness Day campaign started by the Community Foundation. You know, that's, that's a great, great hit around the city, and, uh, you know, a big thank you to the, to them and all the local nonprofits, groups, and associations that, uh, for the continuous hard work. Uh, to Greg and all our staff here at, uh, at the City Hall and, and, uh, people that work for the city, a lot of invaluable people in our, in our organization that keep the wheels turning, and of course, my colleagues around the table here, city council work very hard, uh, big commitment to, to look after everybody every day, and, uh, one of the biggest, uh, things on our plate here, the annexation crew, uh, you know, great effort moving forward, mountains of progress there, and, and thank them lots for, uh, getting us more land and to, uh, to support our, our families, and of course, you know, the people who continue to, to live in Grand Prairie and, and make Grand Prairie our home, so have an outstanding two thousand and thirteen. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On December the eleventh, I attended the Friendship Center Senior Christmas Dinner, thanks to Kelly and their staff, and they had entertainment there. It was very, uh, very nice, uh, evening. December the thirteenth, the Chamber Mixer at the Carpet Superstore, that was well, uh, well-attended, too. Uh, on December the fourteenth, I attended the City Hall Christmas Luncheon. Good job by, uh, I think it was the second floor, and did a really bang-up job, and, uh, I think I even bought, yeah, I did buy another plate to take home for my wife. And, uh, I didn't win anything. Uh, our city manager cleaned up, though. Bought two tickets and one. Anyway, uh, on the seventeenth, I attended a great community builder funeral. Evelyn Tomlinson, she was one of the long-mate families. It was a sadness to see her go. On, uh, the nineteenth, I also attended Minister Wayne Drysdale's Open House at the Curling Rink. On the twentieth, I opened a tender, uh, later at five o'clock, uh, headed, entered, uh, I attended the Scores Standing Committee Meeting, which I thought it was. I wanted to have a meeting, but they just had supper, so I enjoyed that, too. Uh, on the twenty-first, I was also at Greg, uh, Terry's anniversary party. Good job, and it was very nice. Thank you very much. On the twenty-second, I attended the open house at MLA Everett McDonald's in, uh, Lakeland there. On the twenty-seventh, I attended, uh, the tour of the county's new sportsplex, and it's, uh, it is definitely, as John Simpson has said, it's a, it's not a, a darker barn. Uh, there is a lot of natural light. The, the design of the building, opening to the south, is very nice there. They're, uh, moving along right, quite quickly. It's not finished yet. They've got, uh, RFPs out for food vendors, I believe, and an exercise room, and, uh, one or two other little things. Uh, Ernie's, I think they've approached, uh, Ernie Sports to put in maybe a, a mini, a mini mall in there, you know, forty thousand square feet or something. And again, I would like to thank Heart Minister Wayne Drysdale. Uh, he sent us a letter when we were out there on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Uh, he's thanking us for taking the time, uh, and thanks again, Mayor Given, for your initiative, to, uh, have council come out and then, and go to our open house, and I had asked them, and they were so diligent, they sent us, uh, each, uh, a copy of Hansard, which was, uh, really nice of them to do. It's, uh, every, every name, uh, or e- every comment that is, uh, said, uh, that day is recorded for history. And Kevin McLean was in there twice. I don't know what happened there. They must've missed him on the first round. And I'd also just like to give some kudos here to our snow removal crews. I'd like to thank Robert Carroll. You know, it's amazing what we can do and how much snow we can remove when it doesn't snow a foot every day. I mean, they're getting around to, i- into residential, and they're moving a lot of snow, so if we can keep the snow away till maybe April, it'll be, uh, we'll all clean up. That's everything, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. That might be wishful thinking. I thought I saw it snowing pretty heavily this afternoon. Um, a number of events that, uh, I attended over the last while have already been mentioned, so I'll try to be relatively brief and hit some of the highlights. I, I also attended the grand opening of the Grand Prairie Compset and Public School Board Student Health and Wellness Center, and congratulations to them and all the volunteers and funders who made that possible, a really fantastic community effort that delivered a result that is, uh, um, I think probably unique in the province, and, and great, uh, to see that Grand Prairie organization's doing that. Um, uh, over a number of days, uh, leading up to the Christmas break, the city manager and I attended a num, well, every single city facility to deliver Christmas greetings and, uh, some Christmas goodies for staff, and it's a great opportunity to get out and, uh, see staff's, uh, working conditions in just about every, well, in every city facility and, and get to talk to frontline staff, and so I certainly appreciate that city of Grand Prairie Christmas tradition. Uh, I also attended one alert board of directors meeting on December eighteenth in Calgary. Um, and I believe, uh, other than that, all the items, um, that I had had been mentioned. Uh, of course, everybody hopefully had a fantastic Christmas holiday, a great New